All right, so welcome, everybody. This is our special board meeting for August. Today is August 24, 2021. We do have some business that we want to conduct, but as we know, these meetings are meant to be to pick up stuff that we're trying to get done and that has a timestamp on it and also to have open discussions on some other objects of our form of business if they come up. So, welcome, everybody. Today is the first day for the Duchess County Fair. The fair has opened up today and it's going to run for seven days. I was happened to be there this morning for the kickoff. They're well-prepared. They've done a lot of work to make people as comfortable as possible with the conditions that we're going through. We all know that around us in the county and in the country, the pandemic has not gone away. And, you know, but in addition, like the last 20 months have given us, there's always challenges that we had to live go live through. And this is one of the, one of the things that we are welcoming to have the Duchess County Fair back in the village of Rhinebeck for this year. So if you go, be safe, take the precautions. The fair is ready for you. So, having said that, I'd like to lead off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Martine, I forgot to bring the contracts up with me. I'm sorry. I'm going to move ahead. We do have Brandy Nelson with us this evening from Ty &amp; Bond, who met with us to discuss, not with Karen or CFO and myself, to discuss a water rate study task force that was going on. And so this information that put on the cloud, if you don't mind, I would like to have Brandy just kind of summarize it so the board can have more has any questions.
Sure. Do you need me to go to the microphone?
If you don't mind, then it's easier for them to figure out. For those who don't mind, Brandy flew in from Iceland just for the meeting.
Thank you. Happy to be here. So for the record, I'm Brandy Nelson, project manager with Ty &amp; Bond for the village engineers. And we've provided the village a proposed task order to complete a water rate study for the village. And what the purpose of the rate study is to do is it recognizes the fact that the village needs to make some capital improvements to the water system based on a study that's been recently completed. And the objective of the study would be to analyze the current pricing structure for rates and look at the capital improvements that are proposed and the area where those improvements need to occur and align the water rates with the future financial outlook of the water system and the water fund, I guess, as it's structured currently. And then also help the village formulate a possible rate structure to evaluate a district formation. So as you all know, currently, water is delivered to customers both inside and outside the village. And it makes it a little bit more challenging for the village to secure financing for improvements that occur outside of the village. So part of the assessment of the water rate structure would be to look at capital improvements needed outside the village and a couple of the special water dish, well, what do we call them? Special water users that are outside of the district currently and find an equitable rate structure. Our process, as it's outlined, would involve a kickoff meeting with the core group of individuals. I'm assuming Karen, the mayor, Brandt, and whomever else you'd like involved in that. And then we develop an electronic model and we'd work closely with Karen to pull in the data that is already there as far as water usage for all the different individuals and all the different rates that are paid currently. And then look at a revenue versus expense model and find a couple of scenarios where we could give two or three different rate structures. And then what we would do in that analysis is come back to you guys, present that information. Typically, we recommend a public hearing because you want to make sure we're communicating with the community on what those changes are and how we're trying to make it as equitable as possible. And, and then we would provide to you in following the public meeting, if there was anything that came out of that meeting that required some adjustment, we'd sit down with you guys and come up with a decision on recommended rate structure, summarize all of that in a technical memo that then you guys could use to either support your district formation and/or just rebalance your rates according to the capital expenses that are needed for the system over the next few years. Just interesting fact, for those of you who don't know, the rates have not been adjusted since 2006. And so clearly you have expenses that are incurred and you have assets in that system that are aging out that need to be replaced. So really, this is a way to find the revenues necessary to equitably pay for the improvements that need to be had to maintain the system in good working order.
Do you do any, any sort of scenarios where there might be added customers? Say other housing developments come into being in the future? Is there any sort of like, you know, ceiling scenarios that you are looking at?
So typically what we'll look at are really just those things that are on the table as far as new water demand. The village is fairly built out, but we would look at whether there are any large parcels that might potentially be built out. We would look at large users in the system. So there are a couple of different users who are larger users than other users. And so I want to look at whether or not they have any growth plans on the table. And then in this particular case, with the village providing water into the town, there are a few instances where we know there are some proposed development that may come and, and there may be additional demand on the system. And so we'd want that area to be assessed as sort of an out-of-village user rate that could accommodate new users that might come down the road. And so we have in our firm an individual, his name is Mike Schrader, and this is what he does all over the Northeast, specifically water rate structures for water and sewer utilities. So he's very experienced. It's his area of expertise. The model that we use is something he's developed. So it's a proprietary Ty &amp; Bond product. And, you know, he would be the one who would come and have the meeting here. He would actually come to the office as long as we're meeting in person. He's really likes the idea of coming and sitting down with Karen and getting the data and then meeting with the village trustees to describe and run through what our analysis is and then engaging the public. He's very good with the public.
How far out do you look at the capital improvements? Is that a five-year or 10-year?
10 years typically unless you're thinking you've got plans for further down the line. So I think the water engineering report that you have has got about a 10-year window on it.
Go ahead.
Are there any economies of scale to this particular process that would suggest that we also examine the sewer rates at the same time?
I asked Mike that same question. And no, not really. It's two different structures. Your water users are a much bigger group than your sewer users. And so it's a different, it's a different analysis.
So Brandy, one of the questions I had that I shared with you was, what is the granularity that you look at when you look at the village and also outside of the village? I mean, would you divide the village up into businesses and residents or sectors like we have it today? And or would you, and also outside the village?
Yeah. So Mike and I talked about that. He said customarily, they're going to look at residential users and commercial users as separate categories. They're going to kind of naturally separate based on consumption. And, and then we were trying to come up with the right term for it. I'm not sure, Karen, if you guys already have a term for those sort of special rate payers that are outside of?
Outside of water users.
Outside of water users.
That's pretty technical.
So the gardens is the example that I can think of. So we wanted to make sure that we were capturing water users who are currently paying a special rate versus water users who are outside of the village who are currently not paying a special rate. So he was thinking three or four categories, probably not eight to 10, but he really needs to look at the data and see how you're already categorizing them and then make some decisions there. I think that'll be a little bit of a dynamic process and we'll have a conversation or two about it.
Right, because the gardens, they have that special assessment like built into their water bill, but the Rhine Cliff does not because they kind of predate, they were already there and predated it. And I definitely agree with your idea of having different outside districts because they have different, you know, different needs.
Right, right. So, you know, to Karen's point, the, the theory is if you have, as Vanessa pointed out, a new user come on board, customarily, let's say you have a new development that wants to be served with village water and you want more, you've got plenty of water. So selling water is great. You have the water, why not sell it, right? So by adding those people, they're going to be responsible for installing new infrastructure. So their infrastructure shouldn't need any repairs in the near term. So you would set a rate that is really about the consumption and the need to maintain the plant. Whereas Rhine Cliff, you know, probably needs some distribution system improvements given the age of the system and just anecdotally what I've heard over the years about what needs to be done down there to make that system more operable. And so, so this process allows that analysis of condition of system to be factored into the rate structure to try and find some equity for all the users.
So one thing this process doesn't include though for everybody is it does not include creating the water districts.
That's correct.
Correct? So that is something we have to, we would have to, if we go forward, we have to work with the town of Rhinebeck on for those out-of-district users to create districts outside of the, outside of the village boundaries.
Right. And didn't Brandt bring up the fact that we would need cooperation with the town? Because right now, we don't have a way to really lean on people to pay their bills, right?
Correct.
So that would then be another piece of this.
Well, that's what we need for doing this, because we can't collect.
Right, right.
So is it, so is it one district now and we want to create more? Is that the idea?
Yes.
You don't really have any districts now.
Oh, so it's like not an official state-recognized district?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
In one area.
Got it.
Which is all of our water users that are on the water system.
So this does not include all the legal procedures to create an official one district or more?
Yeah. And district formation is a combination engineering legal process where we would need to work with the village's attorney and the town's attorney to create what's called a map plan and report. And the map is the area where the district will be served. The plan describes what infrastructure is there. And then, I'm sorry, the plan shows where the infrastructure is and the report describes what infrastructure is there. And from there, you create a district. But this, this would give you the sort of the first background information of what the rate structure might look like in that scenario.
That's why I viewed it as a two-step process. Get this information so we understand what it would mean. And then if we decide to go forward, then start the second process.
And it seems like there's also a third piece, which would probably be all the change management of your software and your workflows and billing and all of that project work.
At this point, I know, I think we kind of plan to upgrade the meter reader and some of the equipment. I mean, we haven't really looked at that. But what it does allow us to do also would be to turn over those unpaid to the town and have them collect it and then give us the money after they, you know, it can be a lien on the mayor's tax, town tax.
Within our billing system today, Vanessa, we already have four areas, or we call them zones. And we bill them based on when they're collected and bill them separately today within this ongoing.
So you already have the software that you can reach her to meet the needs of it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Because we have four zones in the village.
Quick question, Karen. Without the districts, can you bill Rhine Cliff or other remote locations differentially than you do inside the, inside the village? It has to be one rate for all payers.
Not Rhine Cliff itself, but we do have a way because we don't have a, we have a different section on block for all the town users. So we do, we can extract all the town users, but we can't, as Brandy said, we can't take Rhine Cliff and separate it from.
And we can't bill them without an agreement to bill them. We have an agreement.
Right, we can't bill them different than what we are billing them unless the board of the town come up with an assessment.
So we can't change Rhine Cliff's water rates without town approval?
Without having to creating a district.
Okay, so like if we decide to just, I'm just sort of spitballing this, but like if we just decide to change our rates and like not bother going through the district process, I'm not arguing that we should do that, but I'm just trying to figure it out. Can we just do that for everyone?
Right, but theirs would change at the same rate as the village users.
Okay, so they can't be different than the village users with the way our current agreement is structured?
Correct.
Okay.
If we raise the rate, we raise it for everybody.
Got it. Okay.
Under our current plan.
Great. Thank you.
So there is a cost for doing this. The cost is $20,000. And the, the original proposal, you know, that Brandt has adjusted and Brandt's absence I want to bring up, was for Brandt and Karen to go through this analysis and do it. And that's when we understood that Ty &amp; Bond had, we wanted to look at their proposal. So there's an in-house method that could be done. And then there's, we could, we could hire our engineering firm to do it. The in-house method, by the way, to do all of this would be very time-consuming on our staff to do.
Yeah, and Brandt.
Yeah.
It would be time-consuming for everyone when everyone is already pretty busy.
And I think it's something that if you have a model for, if there's sort of a model developed for this, then I think it's something rather than you having to figure out what that model looks like based on trial and error. I think, you know, having some sort of tool that's, that's already here and existing, that's worth something.
Well, and also it seems like from this proposal, it's guaranteed to be complete within sort of three, three and a half months.
Right, right. And, you know, clearly we do need this to be cooperative effort. Karen has an enormous amount of data that she manages through this process and we need to coordinate with her. And I think there'll be some questions about exactly how the rates are structured currently in the different zones just so that we make sure that we're inputting accurately into our model and then outputting meaningful information that can be assessed in the rate analysis.
Even with this model, it's going to involve the water.
A lot of work.
You know, Chrissy and Karen and Brandt to help pull the data together and do this.
Right.
It doesn't remove them from the process.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be needing to do additional work in addition to pulling the data together.
I don't think so.
Right. Just so we have an idea of like this is a $20,000 process, like about, I'm just asking this question for the viewers. How much revenue do we take in from the water system every year? Like 1. something-ish?
Eight hundred thousand.
It's like 800,000?
There's other service charges and other.
Okay. But in relation to the overall bulk of revenues, this is? Yeah. I'm trying to get sort of like a vague percentage idea. Yeah.
The water, the current water is not meant to be a profit center.
Yeah, no, yeah.
We charge the users a rate to cover what our terms of ownership.
Right, and as we discovered during the last budget period, we're no longer covering our costs.
Yes.
Right. So like one way or the other, these rates have to change. And whether we put sort of a professional analysis behind it or one that's slightly more ad hoc is the decision that's in front of us now.
Correct.
Okay.
And if we're only making this, you know, once every, how often should the process?
Probably more often than once every 15 years.
I'm like 2006. And it wasn't until now that with all the capital improvements and the capital improvements that we're planning that we're starting to see where we're needing to go.
Yeah. In general, you know, all infrastructure systems that are here in the village need work. I mean, we all, you know, we all have to maintain our own homes. So, you know, think of it in terms of your own house. It always needs work, so you always are needing to invest. So that being the case, rate increases should be part of sort of regular dialogue. And, and it's not just to increase rates, it's not a profit center. As Gary said, it, it's really you're, you need to maintain the system. There's a cost to do that. And you need the system, the, the water system to break even.
So, so might the recommendation be like a series of rate increases over a period of time?
Yeah, and that's part of what our analysis will show is like you're going to have these capital improvements over this 10-year horizon. And we'll run through a couple of scenarios. Like, does it make sense to do, you know, a 3% increase for the next 10 years? Or does it make sense to do a 5%? And then, you know, a 3% in the next 10 years? You know, we'll run through a couple of different scenarios to try and make it as palatable to folks as possible.
I think it seems sophisticated enough and a complex enough problem that, that I think I would really value.
So all right, so let's, why don't we move forward? I'm going to make a motion to accept the Ty &amp; Bond's proposal for task order number 18 to do the water rate analysis. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lydia. Discussion, more discussion. We've had a lot that any more discussion needed.
Do we know what Brandt's perspective on this is?
I don't. I'll be honest with you.
All right.
Do you?
Nope.
I?
No, I mean.
I don't want to speak for him. I mean, we did have a conversation and he did say, why can't we do this?
In-house.
We have been doing it. So again, it wasn't a lengthy discussion. Just mentioned that and I don't want to speak for him.
I think it comes down to cost. And if we talk about $20,000, right, this is a $20,000 task work order that would come out of our funds for our water department that we currently have. And since we are a non-for-profit kind of thing, not a cost center, not non-for-profit, not a cost center, you know, we have, I forget now, how much in our fund balance for the water? 900 or is it 600?
It's 618,000.
Six, yes.
This seems like a good news for the fund balance.
So I would make, you know, I would, I would amend that motion to say that we use task order number 18 and use fund balance, water fund balance money to pay the $20,000. Do I have a second to the?
I'll second that.
Lydia, thank you. All right. Any other discussion?
I just want to say I'm totally on board and supportive. And I think to be able to look 10 years out and then as Vanessa, as you were mentioning, maybe in five years, you reevaluate it because things change. We have another large water upgrade coming, a water system upgrade coming. We just finished the water main project. So I think we have big enough things on the plate that to have some, you know, somebody look at it and somebody help us with some of the capital project planning is a good idea.
I must say, I'm, I think it is worth $20,000 just to have a specific timeline behind it. In addition to the professionalism and everything else that you bring, but having a guaranteed timeline is very attractive to me at this point. There's a lot of balls in the air.
Yeah, and unfortunate that we have an engineering report that goes out 10 years. That is a great asset to have already that we've, that we have covered. Okay, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, opposed, motion is carried. Please begin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Mike is on vacation this week, but we'll give you a call next week and we'll get started collecting the data. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandy.
Did you want me to stay for anything else? Did you want me to stay for anything else?
I don't think so.
I didn't see there was anything.
No. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the first item on the agenda, which is the union contracts. First, I'd like to thank trustee Lew and trustee Slavy for doing the labor relations contract and working through those issues associated. And I'd like to thank trustee Portozzi for working with me on the police contract. All right. It's always good to do this. It's always good to work with all of our staff. Our staff is dedicated to working with the village of Rhinebeck and they all care and are passionate about what they do. And this is a way for us on a three-year basis to go back and review what our plans are for them and to, as needed, make those necessary adjustments. So with that, I'm going to lead off with the one for the labor union. This was an MOA that was signed with them and then ratified by all of our employees. All right. I think all of you have had a chance to look at this and review the MOA that is out there. I don't know if it required me to go through it in detail unless you have specific questions. But I would first like to call for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the village of Rhinebeck and the United Public Service Employees Union.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Now discussion. Are there any questions? There was a change that we missed when we signed the MOA. I want to bring that to your attention. And that was in section E under longevity, which will be changed as the following. So basically, everybody, we pay a longevity stipend to all of our employees on five-year, 10-year, 15-year, 25-year, and 30-year. What was negotiated in this contract was no change in the longevity rate for the first two years, 2021 and 2022, but a $50 increment in 2023 in longevity rate. That $50 increase was not shown on the contract for the 15-year anniversary. Instead of reading 750, it should read 800. And that'll be the longevity payment in 2023. Other than that, is there any other questions in regard to this contract? For public record, I would like to note that upon reaching this contract, we have in good faith negotiated with the union and have set them on a 2% increase over the next three years for all of our employees, plus some additional adjustments for clothing and changes in comp time. And a big change that we made, not that affects them, but was when we pay out on longevity and when we pay out on vacation. And this is for the public. You know, we normally would do this on an anniversary date. And everybody's anniversary date varies based on their date of hire. It made sense to us to collapse that to doing it on a January 1 date for everybody. It worked with our accounting system better. It, it actually gives all of our employees a little bit of a stipend ahead of time to be able to enjoy that longevity pay. So that was one of the adjustments we made in, in this contract that was reflected.
They're like thoroughbreds. They're like thoroughbreds. It's every birthday. Just one clarification. It's a 2% raise per year for the next three years. So it's 2% in 2021, 2% 2022, 2% 2023. 2% over three years, but 2% each year.
Thank you for clarification. Okay, I'd like to call for a vote to accept the memorandum of agreement between the village of Rhinebeck and United Public Service Employees Union. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Donor opposed? Thank you, motion carried. Nonopposed. Next. At the same time, we have a police union contract with the UPSEU for all of our part-time police officers. Again, we negotiated, Vanessa and I, worked closely with our bargaining unit at the police department. And we negotiated a contract and have a signed MOA that has been ratified by all of the police in, that work for the village of Rhinebeck. And I'll summarize again some of the things that I began. It's the unit members who have completed two years of service with the village shall receive following wage increase in 2021, 1.8%, 2022, 2%, and 2023, 2%. We also, a change in this contract was paying for a shift differential. So this is new, a new feature for them to pay for what would be not the normal day shift, which is, I forget the label APC, but it's not A, but from the 3 to 11 shift, there'd be a 2.5% shift differential. And from the 11 to 7 shift, which we only run on weekends during the summer months, right, would be a 5% differential of when that is paid out. The other thing is we've added for the first time ever for our police association and our members in the contract, additional increase in their longevity pay. We wanted to make their longevity pay equivalent to what we have paid our other labor union staff. So they, these two programs are now equivalent in terms of our payout. The police were at a much lower rate and the out years were at half of what we were, what our other employees were getting. And we thought it was fair, an offer by the village, to do that. The third biggest item to, the big item too, was to add additional sick time. We have sick time for all of our employees who work in the village staff who are not under union contract and are part-time. But we did not have any sick time for our police department. So in the same agreement that we have with our employees here that work for, in village hall, it's the same thing as their hours work, they accrue sick time up to a maximum of 13 days, which they cannot buy out. But they can carry over, but it doesn't get greater than 13 days. That summarizes that contract. Oh, I'm sorry. We also added in both, well, added in this contract, not the other, yet a social networking policy, which basically tells, gives us balance of what the police department can do in terms of social networking. That's Facebook and whatever media. So that's a change. Any other questions?
I mean, Rick's pointing out, we also put in language to clarify that they will do any state mandated training. It's, you know, and we called out anything to do with procedural justice, implicit bias, that this is, this is to be considered training as any other mandated training would be.
I think that's what it was getting out about.
Oh, yeah. And then lastly, we have a clause in there that really encourages them to participate in community events and to look for ways to engage with the community so that we can really foster bond between our officers and members of the community.
I mean, this was a topic of discussion, given all this happened in the last year. Having, you know, the fact that there was a village, a contractual response of it into the contract, I think is very important and agreed upon by the membership. There's other stuff, other things to be done, but I think getting these two items into the contract was really very important and well done.
And this is an outcome of our police reform.
Right. And so a special thank you to the police reform committee members. Because it's really, it did flow from their recommendations.
Very good. Any other discussion? And I'd like to call for a vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the village of Rhinebeck and the UPS EU, which is our part-time police officers unit that the collective bargaining agreement is with. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So Carrie, thank you very much. And thank you all for your help.
Yeah, thank you, Gary.
Next, streetlight purchase resolution.
Okay. So this has been an extremely long process, but we're actually at the point where finally there's going to be action. So just to recap for a moment, about four and a half years ago, there was a consortium of Hudson Valley communities that were going to get together and try to replace, purchase all of their streetlights, replace them all with LED streetlights. The theory being that the LED streetlights use much less electricity, more energy efficient, create a darker sky, better environment, and also have a much lower operating cost, much, or actually much, much reduced maintenance cost. So everybody thought four and a half years ago, that would be a really fun thing to do. They'd have it done in six months. It didn't happen for a number of reasons. It was hard to get a maintenance contract. The New York Power Authority stepped in and became the aggregator for this project. So basically, New York Power Authority said, we will aggregate the purchasing of all these streetlights. We will aggregate the installation contract and we will aggregate the maintenance contract for everybody. So NIPA put together this aggregation and began a program of helping municipalities purchase their streetlights from Central Hudson. So there's two components to, at least to our section. The first, we have to purchase the streetlights and then we'll have a maintenance contract, a replacement and maintenance contract with Central Hudson. And there's really two, excuse me, with NIPA. There's two components. NIPA wanted to structure their contracts, our loan for the work and for the lights, so as to be revenue neutral. So they're willing to say, okay, you're paying $42,000 a year for your streetlights. We will structure a loan for you such that you're only going to pay $42,000 a year. So you won't see any bump in your, you won't see any increase in your expenses while you're paying out the, paying out the lights. Along the way though, first thing we have to do is purchase the lights. We just received an invoice from Central Hudson for $88,478.58, which would be to purchase our streetlight system. I spoke with Karen and we thought that this instance is a capital improvement and we are, our fund balance is in the condition that we are actually over our 25% upper bound. We have a, a couple of years ago, we put in a policy, we wanted to keep our fund balance within a certain, certain bound or above the upper bound, that it would be good use for fund balance to go ahead, fund the purchase of the streetlights. This would go to Central Hudson, transfer of the lights would actually be September 1st. And I spoke to NIPA and they would think they're going to get started right after Labor Day. So that would be the, yeah, it's all, now, finally, after four and a half years, right? Snappy, snappy. Excuse me?
As if we didn't hear anything.
It goes up and down to Albany, it goes up to, who knows? It's, there's a lot to get there, but we finally made it to this point. So I put together a resolution in resolution language, but basically it's to fund the $88,478.58 out of fund balance to purchase our streetlights, which is then the first step into our complete conversion to LED lights and then maintenance being done as to the Central Hudson aggregator. And I'll say that the big savings on this, the electrical savings is, exists, but the big savings really is in the maintenance contract. Central Hudson charges a lot per year for, basically for maintenance. And we can do a much, much better job, we can hit a much better rate for the maintenance. And that's where the big savings comes over time. The other thing I'll say is that I was in touch with a couple of municipal auction and recycling companies. And they did say that there may be interest in our old LED lights. We have a mixture of sodium vapor, mercury vapor, and LED lights. In order to enforce the warranties and everything on the contract, we have to have everything installed fresh. So we have, we're going to own a set of pretty decent LED lights. And what these guys are saying to me is that, yes, if you can segregate out your LED lights, we can probably find a market. So hopefully we can recoup a little bit of that cost. We just, I just started that discussion.
Great. So, okay, because I have not been here for four years. So we're, the idea behind this is that we buy like the street lamps, you know, the big street lamps, and then we, from Central Hudson. And so then we own them.
Correct.
And then this NIPA people?
NIPA, yes.
NIPA people? Okay. Oh, you're a power authority?
Power.
Oh, power authority, oh, okay. That makes more sense. So then NIPA, then what do they do? They just like take over our existing things that we just purchased from Central Hudson? Or do they replace them?
They, no, they acted as an aggregator. We actually have a contract with a third, with a third party. Who's going to do, who's going to do the maintenance for all of the, all of the streetlight systems in the area. And that was what the task Central Hudson took on. They said, look, we're going to take bids and we're going to try to say from Westchester to Albany, from, you know, from Dover to Delaware.
Right.
We want somebody to take up the contract for doing streetlight maintenance and repair. And so with their, basically, basically using their buying power, they got us a maintenance contract with a third party. So they'll be doing it at Red Hook, they'll be doing it.
Okay, great. So like if our maintenance contract, what is our maintenance contract with Central Hudson at the moment?
It's built into the rates.
The rates?
Yeah.
Got it. So.
But it's several hundred dollars.
It's like a hundred dollars a light. It's going to go, it's going to go to like 10 bucks a light.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And our operating cost goes down.
Right, because we're using LEDs and not the sodium vapors. Okay.
And with a better lighting.
Okay, but like the pieces of metal that are currently sitting in the ground, those are not going to change?
No, the, basically, Central Hudson owns the poles, which they've been replacing around the village.
Right.
We are buying the arms and the head.
Oh, that is helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all. And then we will actually be renting the space back from Central Hudson on their pole.
Crikey, all right.
That's built in, that's built into the calculation. So we're, so we're purchasing the existing base.
Okay.
What was the, what's the, not the sunk cost, but the.
The arm.
No, no, but the accounting term is their, not their fixed cost, but their sunk cost. But basically, Central Hudson said, fine, you want to buy, you have to pay us for our investment.
Got it.
So we're, so yeah.
But it's like the two-year cost of the light, the light pack. So we're, I mean, we're not getting them for their, what you purchase them for.
No.
We're getting them from Central Hudson, buying them over their rate of, that they got to have to go.
And that purchase price was also negotiated through NIPA.
Got it.
Because you can imagine Central Hudson wanted to max out.
I can imagine that Central Hudson wanted to take again.
We have, we have 209 lights.
Two, 245.
245, I'm sorry. 245 lights that we're going to buy for $88,400.
Okay.
And the other thing, and most people don't realize it, but when a streetlight goes out, the only way that Central Hudson knows is if somebody calls them on the phone and says, there's a problem with the streetlight.
Seriously?
Yep. That's it.
So which we do a lot.
I can imagine, yeah.
With this new system, we'll have actually on part of the system on the, where the photo eye is, there's actually a smart sensor and the, the streetlights will not be networked. And so if a streetlight fails, actually this signal will get a message and the, and the maintenance company gets a message so they know to get dispatched.
Smart infrastructure.
Yes, smart infrastructure.
Is the maintenance contract also covering, managing the maintenance of it? Like the, the smart system?
We will have a contract, yes. I mean, maintenance system, we have a contract with the software supplier of the system. Yes, it's a package. And the other part about it is that these, we didn't go for it, but these nodules or these nodes up top can become quite sophisticated, more than what we need, but they can do things like dim the lights after midnight or turn them up if there's a first responder emergency or something like that. But that gets more costly, obviously. I believe in Kingston, there's a system where they actually try to triangulate if there's a gunshot. They actually, it's a very, it's a part of a new kind of wired, censored network system. We didn't get all that. We got the basic model.
Right.
We don't need, we don't need, it's not really worth it to us to get all those other fancy features.
You start having a spade of gun violence, you might not think about.
Right, right. But over time, as this becomes more affordable, we might want to say, you know, we will do, we may change our life.
Especially depending on what happens with like 5G and all of that. Okay.
Exactly. So, so this is, it's been a long term in the making, but it seems to be finally here. And I think in terms of, you know, the studies work for greenhouse gas reduction, for our own village budget.
It's probably, it's one of the recommended actions with climate smart.
So by paying the $88,000, which we're not, if we do that, we're no longer financing that.
We're not financing it.
If we vote not to finance that part of the $88,000, we pay that off, does it shorten the length of our loan or is it lowering the payments and the loan duration is the same?
The loan duration will be calibrated so that we're revenue neutral.
It was revenue neutral based on what we're currently paying, so.
Right, but they, but whatever the bill is, they're going to calculate the bill such that it will be revenue neutral.
Okay. So we're getting the benefit of purchasing immediately, so that's my math.
Correct, yes, yes.
So what, what is this bill, what is this loan? Sorry.
So basically, NIPA is willing to, they, they set up a program where they will loan municipalities the money, and I think it's on the order of, I'm sure, about 200 and something thousand dollars to actually do the installation and the purchase and installation of all the fixtures. So NIPA's saying, we are willing to finance that.
Got it, so these, these things that we're purchasing from, the arm and the leg bolt, that we're purchasing from Central Hudson are going to all have to be replaced?
Yes.
Well, the arm, not the arm, only the arm if it's necessary.
Okay, but the bit thing here, that we might be able to sell to these other people that want the LEDs.
Right.
Okay, so we're going to have to get a new thing like this.
You're at the new.
And that's what the revenue neutral payment is. Okay.
Correct.
And an arm if it's needed.
And an arm, and an arm if necessary.
But not all fixtures go on the same arms.
Got it.
And some arms get old and corroded, so they're going to look at that.
Okay.
And you do need, the other idea is that this is line work. You have to have a, I think a 600 volt certified lineman because you're up near the Y at the top of that. So it's a, it's, does require, it's not your average electrician. You have to have a pretty high set of skills, although I'm told, once they start, it goes pretty quickly. And.
Red Hook is done. Rhinebeck is done.
Town is done.
Annadel, Bark is done. Kingston is done. And they all went through this, New Pulse, I think is done. They've all gone through this process. And we all started, by the way, at the same time.
Right, yeah.
It's just that ours, for some reason, got hung up somewhere.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So I'm really, you know, I'm glad that we can finally get to this place.
We do have a question here.
Yes.
Speak loudly.
The part that is not LED, that you might not be able to resell whatever, the gas ones, is it our village's responsibility to dispose of them?
No, they will dispose of them. They take it away.
They will.
They take it away.
Because I would imagine that's some sort of an environment.
Correct, correct. And NIPA did a good job putting together, we, we had, there were, this was a while ago, we had a lot of meetings where the municipalities came in and we talked about these sorts of issues, like, don't stick us with the, with the bill for disposing of the mercury, right? Like, again, that's another place you should aggregate it. So these moves were generally hashed out really a couple of years ago in intermunicipal meetings with NIPA.
So you'd like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution to spend, to withdraw $88,478.58 from the fund balance to fund the purchase of streetlights from Central Hudson.
Second.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any other discussion?
When will we see the contract with either NIPA or the third party?
They are going to start installing, well, we should see the contract on the first. They're going to start installation, I said, right after our Labor Day.
Okay, so, okay.
September 7th, I think it's the start date, right?
Okay, I mean, do we need to vote to approve that contract? Have we already done that? Is that implicit here?
I guess we have not, we, actually, I think we have approved that contract, as a matter of fact.
That's how we got into this process.
Right, we had, remember, there was a briefing book about yethick at some point? And that's where that contract was, is in there.
Got it.
Yes.
All right. I had nothing to do with that, so that's great.
We could, we could power a small community on the paper that was used to create.
Oh, my God.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. So Carrie, thank you. And Rick, thank you for three-plus years.
Since I am the lead.
Hello, is it pass the public service?
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a solar repair RFP. So I'm just going to, I'm going to go back a little bit in time. Everybody realizes we do have a solar system on this building, right? As we have 99 panels up there which provide our electric costs, which we've been working on reducing by changing all of our lighting internally to LED lights as well. All right, but so our solar system goes to help us recover those electric costs that we're having up there. It was installed, and I forget now when it was installed, I'm sorry, for many years, several years ago. And we are no longer under warranty. And we are no longer under warranty with the original install company. We do have issues where there is sometimes needed repairs to the solar, to the solar system. Just so everybody knows, each panel is individually controlled by a microinverter, you know, on there. And it's technology, and sometimes technology fails. And then there's a communication down in our basement, that communication goes back to the portal that this company has and provides for us to watch, so, which is publicly available. And we've made, made available so people could watch how our system is doing. Unfortunately, we do have some of those microinverters that have failed and the unit that does the communication to the external source has also gone bad. The cost for replacing that unit was eighteen hundred dollars, which was over and above the cost of what we could approve. And then we're thinking about this and said, you know, we're out of warranty, how do we, every time we saw something breaks, we have to put out an RFP, we have to go through the process, we have to do this. It just made sense to start thinking about long-term maintenance of our solar PV system. So I approached the town and I put in, I emailed, you know, many months ago, we approved an IMA with the town of Rhinebeck, who has four solar PV systems, so there's five in total, that we would collaborate together to hire one contractor to maintain all of our solar PV systems here in Rhinebeck in the village, and we would share that cost equally. Where we would pay one-fifth of the cost versus theirs. And we would divide that up based on size, because each side, each system is sized, we'll get an aggregate of size of all the systems and divide that up. And so we pay only our share for this contract. So it took a couple of months to get this all through the process, but we are finally at the point where we have an RFP. At the town of Rhinebeck, they have approved the RFP for going out for bid. It's now upon us to also approve it. So this is the town of Rhinebeck, in the village of Rhinebeck, requests for proposals for maintenance of the town and village's shared solar generation facilities, right? So again, we were, we need to go out for bid and then we would get back together again once we get the bids and approve them to the town. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFP to, for the maintenance of the town and village's shared solar generation facilities.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Discussion, questions?
Um, just, I saw that at the, at the bottom of the RFP, it says due by December twenty-twenty. So just to update.
Pardon?
It should be twenty-twenty-one, right?
I didn't see that. Where are you?
At the very bottom.
At the very last page, at the very last line.
Yes, it should be. I'll make an amendment to this before we send it out, thank you.
Does the agreement include, like you mentioned, the communication of the data to monitor the system? Does the maintenance agreement cover troubleshooting, fixing, maintaining the actual communications and all that, the data part of it?
They don't do the monitoring. In other words, they're not gonna monitor our portal and, and watch for it. But what happens is the monitoring portal also tells us what's bad.
Yeah.
So then.
I mean, don't keep that portal up and running, right?
Yeah, portals doesn't go away. That, and, and there's no cost, by the way, for the end-phase portal system. What you're paying for is the device to provide the data to the end-phase, which, since you are paying in a way, but there's not a data cost.
Okay.
So I just wanna point out that this is a place where the town and the village, working together, can save money and, and do this. For a long time, just to circle back to the streetlights, the question was, should the town and the village work together on the streetlights? It turned out, basically, because of the way the contracts are structured, it made no difference. So in that case, we went along our own separate paths. In this case, it's much better to work together.
Right. And there are fifteen task items which are asking all the bidders to do, which includes the monitoring of the PV system as well. Okay. So I'd call for a vote to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Who's gonna write, who's gonna write the RFP? Who's gonna write the RFP?
For here.
This is the RFP.
Oh, 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 okay.
You're reading the RFP.
Oh, okay, I thought this is, okay, I thought this is to approve the agreement.
No.
And this is always in the agreement?
We've had two discussions. First was to approve the IMA.
Okay.
Then at another meeting, we had a meeting to, to go forward with the town and write the RFP.
Forgive me, right, forgive me.
We wrote the RFP.
Right, I'm stuck behind.
This is it.
And then Martina puts it out, as well as the town clerk?
Yes.
And you both take bids and come together.
And I'm working with Councilperson Alan Shear at the town of Rhinebeck on this. We will convene and then come back with a report. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, second.
Oh. We did, I thought we did, I thought we did second.
Probably, but, but that's fine.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. All done. Okay, vacation buyout requests. We have two vacation buyout requests. Sorry, I get my paperwork here. We have a, a buyout request for, and either by employee number. Employee number twelve is asking to buy out a hundred and sixty hours at their current hourly rate of thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents per hour, which is a total of six thousand dollars. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve employee number twelve's vacation buyout request. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rick. Discussion.
Does this bring him or her below the carryover limit?
No, this zeros them out.
This zeros them out?
They're zero, after taking all of their earned vacation, which they can do.
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Oh, was it, you were an aye.
That, that was an aye, yeah.
Alright. Next is employee number twenty-two is requesting to buy out thirty-six hours of their cumulative vacation. To preempt your question, yes, this brings them below the maximum cap limit that is in our contract.
It's better than having them take six weeks off.
Well, this we offer to all our employees as an opportunity, yes. Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve employee number twenty-two's vacation buyout request of thirty-six hours of accumulated vacation leave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, thank you. Moving forward. I'm gonna turn the meeting over now to our village clerk, Martina McClintock.
Um, so our department guys actually got in touch with a new uniform company, Cintas, which is stupid. Because our current uniform company, there's been a couple snags. Apparently for the water department, they come once a month, but we're billed weekly for it. For the highway department, they put in a request for jeans and shirts and haven't gotten anything in three months. We also get our mats from them as well. So each department sat down with me and with a representative from Cintas, who gave us a quote for what the new prices would be with Cintas. Our current company is Ulster Uniforms. Roughly, last year, we spent fifty-six hundred dollars on uniforms. And this is their jeans, their work short, shirts, if they have, wear work shorts, and the mats that go in each department. So the highway guys have been receiving button-up shirts that they don't wear, so they're, they've been useless. And again, in the last couple of months, haven't received what they've been requesting. Additionally, each employee only gets seven articles of clothing. And they come and launder when they can. Whereas with this new company, each employee would get eleven bottoms, eleven tops. They would come once a week to launder. And they are roughly, let me see here, seventy-one hundred. In addition to that, they would provide T-shirts. So right now, we get our T-shirts from Red Hook Tees, which is an additional price. It's roughly three hundred dollars for one department per year for T-shirts. And keeping in mind with last year's cost of five thousand dollars, that didn't include our added highway employee. So the difference would be less than a thousand dollars to switch to this new company per year.
For more articles of clothing, more cleaning, and a better response time.
Yes.
Is that a summarizer?
Yes.
Are these logoed?
I'm sorry?
Are they logoed?
Yes, yes, they are. Included in the prices would be insurance, emblem fees, prep fees, and washing. The only things that they wouldn't offer, that the guys were interested in, would be rain jackets. Those can't be laundered well, so they would be, need to be purchased, but that would be up to you guys if you wanted to additional, purchase additional rain jackets, at least for one of the departments, or have them utilize their winter clothing allowance for that.
Which we just increased for them, so.
Yes.
So let's, let's keep the raincoats separate, kind of, for now? Because I think we can have a discussion on that and let's talk about the basic clothing, which we do provide to our, our laborers, right? Any discussion?
Well, I feel like, I feel unfortunately that, that since the current company is not providing the service as we need it, that's a problem. Unfortunately, or not unfortunately, I think Red Hook Tees has always done a good job. I guess they're very, they're a quick turnaround, they know we come in, they know it's, it's all quick. And I feel a little bad about it, sort of, not, I feel like they've been a very good supplier, had a good price.
So that would just be the T-shirt component.
Okay.
Um, this is for the jeans, the pants, shorts, button-up tops.
Right, I understand.
Shirts like that.
Sorry, just the current supplier for?
Ulster Uniforms.
Ulster, okay. The Cintas, I just, they're based in Cincinnati, Ohio. I was also thinking Red Hook Tees, you know, their local business.
Um, so I'm not sure where they have different, they're, they're based in Cincinnati, but they have different representatives in different places. So we had a rep that came out and that has brought us different samples. And the biggest difference is that Ulster Uniforms uses clothing from a company called Redcap, whereas Cintas uses their own clothing. They create clothing and then they also partner with Carhartt. So the biggest thing is that they don't run out of stuff, whereas Ulster Uniforms does and has for the last three months since our guys have been waiting.
And Red Hook Tees doesn't supply those?
No, Red, Red Hook, they just do work for us.
Yeah.
And they're nice and they're people.
They're completely separate.
I don't wanna keep business for them, but it's a separation.
So this Cintas, Cintas would include T-shirts as well. Whereas right now, we currently get uniforms from Ulster Uniform and additionally, T-shirts from Red Hook Tees.
I'm sure they wouldn't be doing.
So this is really between Cintas and Ulster Uniform.
Right.
For buying those clothing. We could discuss T-shirts too. But this is for buying that main set of clothing between those two companies, which are current. One we currently have used and had some local issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as much as I'm a, I think as you agree, wanna keep things local, if they're not providing a service that works, then I think that's the bottom line.
Is there anything that we can do to nudge them into working better, or have we tried and it's failed?
They have tried to contact him, but the biggest thing is they're out of stock in a lot of different things, so they literally can't provide clothing and it hasn't been that way. Additionally, um, this particular representative, I don't know if, he's been working with the village for years, but their impression was that, no.
Okay.
Because in, in addition to providing the uniforms, he comes and swaps out the rugs, the mats that are at each department.
Right.
That hasn't been kept up to speed.
Got it.
Okay.
So I think the ultimate goal comes from the end user.
Yeah.
Which is our employees who are.
Well, they've been talking about it for months now.
They've been talking about it for quite some time.
Yeah.
And then I went with them for the sit-down with Cintas.
Got it.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve Cintas as our clothing provider for our labor workers.
Second.
Second.
Um, do we also, as part of this, do we also need to cancel our other contract?
With?
With Ulster Uniforms?
Yeah, we just call them up.
Okay.
I want you to go back and do it, because I think I wanna include the T-shirts separately. I wanna say, I wanna amend my proposal to say, I want to make a motion to approve Cintas for providing the eleven garments per year, which are the pants, the shirts, the button-up shirts, et cetera, that we don't really buy from Ulster Uniform. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of changing to Cintas, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carry. Now I'd like to talk about the T-shirts. Because that is another component, and it's a separate component, and the price difference, Martina, was?
So T-shirts were roughly six hundred and sixty dollars last year from Red Hook Tees. Whereas this company, if you include it with the other uniform items, T-shirts are fifty-six cents a week per T-shirt. So depending on how many T-shirts they order, because the amount that they can get is interchangeable, what items they can get, and they can get up to eleven.
Are, are we guys like the logo T-shirts? Some logo T-shirts?
They would logo those as well.
They'll all be local.
It's eleven, I'm sorry.
So right now, we pay eleven dollars a T-shirt to purchase. Whereas if we rented them through Cintas with the other uniforms, they'd be laundered every week. They'd have our emblem and their fifty-six cents per T-shirt.
And if they need to be replaced, are just on that rate of place?
Yes.
At that rate, so.
Which is twenty-nine dollars a year for a T-shirt.
Right.
So like one employee specifically put that they wanted eleven T-shirts, six dollars a week.
Got it.
So let me make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to include the T-shirts into our Cintas order. That's already specified. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss and we can change.
So it, one, one user, eleven T-shirts, five bucks a week, fifty-two weeks a year, twenty-five dollars approximately, thirty dollars.
Twenty-nine dollars. So that's, so eleven T-shirts over the course of a year costs three hundred and twenty dollars.
So the biggest thing, these T-shirts, we're constantly having to order. So that's, we do have an allotment for what the guys can get, I believe it's five T-shirts a year right now for each department.
Yeah.
Their T-shirts don't last them, five T-shirts a year. They constantly get stained or ripped or.
Right.
Dirty. Whereas this company, you can rent them, up to eleven of them per week, laundered on a basis, on a regular basis.
Is there a quality difference?
Um, no.
Okay, so that's good to know.
I mean, these are Carhartt T-shirts with pockets.
Well, actually, yeah, that's, these would be. These are Carhartt T-shirts, whereas the T-shirts that we get currently from Red Hook Tees, I don't believe are Carhartt. I believe they're very basic, so it would be better quality.
Sorry, how much are we spending with Red Hook Tees annually?
Approximately six hundred and sixty a year. For all departments, water, wastewater, and highway.
But they're not really involved, there's no.
Yes, purchase that T-shirt.
No, they're purchased T-shirts, the guys are responsible to wash them, so.
I mean, on one thing, this.
I know.
This does, there's another component to this. The other component is, we give out all T-shirts, right? Rightfully so, to be used for, when you're on village business, right? Those T-shirts migrate when they get worn to, back to, and stay with the user, right? Where these T-shirts never go back to the user, they go back to the rental company. So we don't have village monogrammed T-shirts out in public, out in the public.
I see what you're saying.
Not that, not that our employees would do anything like that, but it does prevent that.
Just, just in case the laundry gets mixed up.
No, it seems.
No, it seems like bringing the t-shirts into the contract means that they're treated as a piece of the uniform.
Yes.
And they're laundered, and they're, and they're maintained, and such.
So these guys are basically like, come to work in their street clothes, change into their uniform?
No, they'd be given 11 items, well, 11 bottoms, 11 tops per week.
They take them home.
Oh, okay.
Come to work, ready to go to work.
And then they leave their dirty stuff at work.
And then they
They can be picked up.
And then they bring them in in a bag, and they supply them.
And they're taken every week.
Got it. And let's just say, one of these Carhartt coveralls with zip legs doesn't make it back to Sintas. Like, what does that result in? Do, do, they then charge us for it at the end of the year?
That is a very good question. We actually didn't go over that.
Okay.
We'll have to ask him.
Okay. Because we would want to make sure that, like, you know, just in case, like, one of these goes missing, or something like that, that, you know, we have the ability to sort of communicate that.
He did say that it includes insurance. I presumably that's, would cover that, but I will double check with him.
Okay, all right.
All right, I got tree commission t-shirts from, from Red Hat Tees.
There you go.
Doesn't include your tree commission. It does not include my tree commission.
All right, I'd like to propose. All right, all in favor of including the t-shirts in with our bid for, I forget, $500? Whatever it was.
Whatever it is.
Whatever price.
56 cents per t-shirt.
With Sintas, please say aye.
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 Opposed? So carry. Martina, thank you. Now, clothing seems to be a big item, rain gear, right? We have in the past provided all of our employees with rain gear. It's been a long time since we've updated that rain gear for them, right? A lot of it is worn, torn, tattered, well-used, and they do, they all work outside, in all weather.
You don't necessarily have to get it from Sintas. They do offer a wide selection, some that are fleece-lined, some that are very basic.
And we can pick and choose what we want.
Yes, I have a separate catalog that has different prices for rain jackets.
And what I want to do is I want to make a motion to authorize Martina to investigate and tell us, come back with a proposal for rain gear, because we're getting into the fall season, and I would like to get, have our employees covered. So, any discussion? Thank you, Rick. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Martina, you're welcome. Thank you. All right, special requests. I'm going to read these, Rhinebeck Garden Club. This is by Susan Chiesin, 1912 Blaine. The Rhinebeck Water, Rhinebeck Garden Club plant sale is at the CVS Plaza. Plants and related items, like pots and bases, et cetera, by the Rhinebeck Garden Club.
Oh, should we mention that the CVS Courtyard now has a name?
That's not the, that's not the
Tables on the Square.
What's it called?
Tables on the Square.
Tables on the Square, it sounds very lofty. It's awesome.
Wow. And this, that was done by Rhinebeck Response. That has nothing to do with us naming it. Rhinebeck Response ran a survey or something, and they chose, and they chose the name.
Nice.
So I will say that Susan did contact me, and I thought, I think, as you can see on application, I thought it was a good idea to have it on the village calendar versus just add on. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Garden Club and to use the CVS, the garden, the
Tables on the Square.
Tables on the Square space for their sale, which is October 2nd, 2021, rain or shine.
Declare it with CVS.
Good question.
Can you declare it with CVS?
Not if they're in front of that square and using the, all right, so the question is, are they using the table space, or are they using?
Table space is still CVS's.
No, no, if you, what if they're on the sidewalk where all the visits have been?
Oh, oh, it's sidewalk, that's fine.
Yeah, I think we need to restrict it. If they're using the actual Tables on the Square part of it, then
You're right.
they need to talk to CVS.
Right, we can't, we can't authorize the use of this, of that space. We can authorize use of the sidewalk, but not the CVS space.
All right, so I'm going to amend my motion to approve the Rhinebeck Garden Club to use the space in front of the Tables on the Square on the municipal sidewalk for their event on October 2nd. If they so choose to want to use the other table space, it needs to be agreed to by CVS.
What does the garden club usually have, in the, in the past, where they had their sale, do you know?
I think it's on the sidewalk.
And they've never had to do an event application before now? That's torture.
But now it's official.
I think they did use the library.
They used the library.
Oh, did they? All right. Well, let's get them into the villages.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Okay, next is from, really from Vanessa.
Yeah, so, hello. They, I'm, I'm working with a member of the community who's a parent, and her son, they're really enthusiastic about getting more people to walk and bike to school, and about biking in the village generally, like safety and walkability. So they're proposing to collaborate with Clement Smart Rhinebeck Task Force to do a table at the Doughboy at the farmer's market September 12th. They're partnering with an organization called 501 Ride Share, which is a nonprofit organization that works to promote biking and bike safety. They're running something called the Car Free or Car Light Pledge. The month of September, there's a whole bunch of activities around biking and walking. And so they'll be trying to sign people up to take the pledge at that table on September 12th, and then getting the word out that September 22nd, which is International Car Free Day, to try to get as many students as possible to bike and walk to school on September 22nd. So we want to have everybody meet up at Alliance Mini Park, and kind of congregate there, and ride en masse, critical mass. And this sort of activity's been done a few years in the past. Liz Mazzarella organized it in the past, so she's, we've been in talks with her. She's busy with Porch Fest, but we have her blessing. We reached out to Albert Cousins, Superintendent, to see if he could help spread the word. He's obviously a very busy man right now, planning to return to school. And we also reached out to Officer Dunn to see if any, especially the officers who are the bike officers, if they could help out, or maybe tie in a bike safety activity with the schools. So that's what these, there's, so there's two events, September 22nd and September 12th. So I'd like to make a motion to approve these two event requests.
Second? Well, Lydia. Lydia got it. Thank you. Any other discussion? It looks like we have a question from the audience.
Yeah, I'd like to see that somehow included for the whole community.
Yeah.
Because I know where I'm employed, they do a big push on not to drive your car to work that day, or things like that. I don't know how you'd ever do that. I mean, we have so many people that drive from Lydson Street to CVS that
Right, yeah.
It's a really push-on.
Right, and so the, the tabling that Angelo will be doing on September 12th would be for the whole community? And by the way, if you're going to school, we'll be meeting up that morning on the 22nd. But for anybody who wants to take the Car Free pledge, or Car Light, like, if you're not able to, to get around totally car-free, you could try to minimize your trips to the different stores, or whatever you have to do that day, or carpool, or something. So we will be spreading the word about that through social media. Maybe it's something you could share, your marriage message, so the whole community could try to take part. And it would, it would be really great to see as many people as possible out there in the streets.
It does go help, it does help promote our walkable, bikeable, sustainable community, right? All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry. Thank you, Vanessa. Good job. Next, third sequence of the Tavern at Beacon Arms presenting an event application for their September music events, which they've been holding that two months. And it's on the front lawn of the tavern. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to observe or enjoy the music that's been offered by them and, you know, the Rhinebeck Chamber. I'd like to mention them as well, but I think it really adds a lot of atmosphere to the Village of Rhinebeck. But they have submitted for September, September 4th, 5th, 11th, 12th, 18th, 19th, 25th, and 26th to have their music, live music on the lawn in front of the tavern. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Tavern at Rhinebeck music event on those days. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Very good. Next, this is from Troop 28, Boy Scouts of America, put in by Joe Phalen. And this is a yearly event, which is sponsored by Northern Dutchess Rod and Gun Club, which is where that troop meets. And it is to conduct an annual pumpkin sale, fall is coming, right? In the Village of Rhinebeck each fall, around Columbus Day weekend, at the Rhinebeck Savings Bank. The parking lot permission has been secured for this event. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Troop 28 for their pumpkin sale events around Columbus Day.
Second.
Thank you, Lydia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. There's so much going on in the village. The last one is from Brian Fallis. He has submitted an app, an application for a solo saxophone called Saxolo with pre-recorded rhythm track accompaniment, and play his instrument with wireless PA speaker, playing pop, popular tracks and jazz, jazz music. This is for Fridays in September 21. Says dates are flexible, but it does say Fridays. Setup time is 3:45, start at 4:00, event time 5:30, and 5:45. He does not specify a specific location. He will, he does specify that on Rhinebeck properties, such as small areas next to or in front of, I think he meant Village Hall, right, he says Town Hall, or a municipal parking lot, or next to Abil, Abbey, Abil Flaffle, Flaffle, or next to the liquor store, or by any particular park bench.
So basically, he's like trying to get permission to be a boxer?
Yes.
Is this the sax man?
No, it's a different man.
This is from, this person is from Tivoli. Now, we don't have a law that prevents boxers.
We do not?
We do not, so, I mean, they could play without this permission. It's nice of him to come forward and ask for this. There is competing times on Fridays with the Chamber, the Rhinebeck Chamber events, which is held on Friday nights as well, at the same time period, so.
Ah.
Not, what? The Beakman, I don't
None of those days overlap, so far only one for the Chamber.
Only one for the Chamber overlaps.
September 17th, that's the Friday that she's giving me so far.
My only concern is the flexibility. I would, well, let's, I'm glad we back up. I'd like to make a motion to approve Brian Fallis's request for Saxolo in the Village of Rhinebeck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? My concern is the flexibility in where it's, where it is. I would prefer not to have it a roaming kind of thing, but more of a stationary kind of place. But I'd never leave that up for discussion as well.
And, and some of these places are not ours to give away. Next to Abil, it's not our space.
Unless it's the sidewalk.
It's on the sidewalk, it is.
It could be on any sidewalk.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, because he's, he's talking about the Rhinebeck Liquor Store, or by the park bench, you know, by Abil Flaffle, municipal lot, Village Hall.
I did explicitly explain to him when I spoke to him that if he were to be on a sidewalk, that that is the municipal property. Any other locations would need approval from the property hall.
Except for somewhere like the Doughboy, which is ours to approve.
Right, but I think any municipal space in, within the Doughboy
Yeah.
would be us, but any other place, he would need a letter of approval.
I mean, I think as long as he keeps it on municipal property, and he doesn't do it at the same time that the Chamber is doing theirs. I think it's very nice of him to ask us for permission, to be brutally honest.
I agree.
And I'd, I'd like to reward that.
I like that.
I guess, I guess the one question, I guess, so, all of our normal sort of noise nuisance laws would always apply, even if we said we approved this, if he's in violation of some decibel thing. All that's, this doesn't, all that, all those laws and all those things still apply. It's not, even if it's permitted, it's still to follow whatever our laws and codes are in terms of being on the sidewalk, and where his position is, and how loud he is, all that good stuff.
Yeah.
Do you want to limit him to the Doughboy?
I don't know Doughboy, I mean, I would like to maybe limit it to that area around the Rhinebeck Savings Bank, across the street, or on the other side, in front of CVS, where the sidewalks are large, and we don't create an impassable situation. Because if you talk about the liquor store, they have outdoor dining set up around, well, I guess, that's across the street. So I think he's talking about the one directly across from CVS. So there's no outdoor dining there, but definitely on the sidewalk, where there's a large enough space that people can get by without feeling pushed at.
Constrained.
Yeah. All right, and those spaces to me are, at, in, on the sidewalk in front of the Rhinebeck, where currently the Chamber uses, right? Or on the CVS side where the parking lot is, anywhere the sidewalk is, is large. But it gets rather constrained on the other side of the sidewalk because of the trees and the
Right.
passing there. So.
I agree with that.
All right, so I'm going to amend my motion to approve Brian Flaffle's request for Saxolo to not interfere or be on the same date as the Rhinebeck Chamber event, which is a conflict, and to limit his playing to either on a large sidewalk down by the Rhinebeck Savings Bank, or on the CVS parking lot, or the CVS sidewalk in front of the Tables on the Square, not using the Tables on the Square.
Yeah.
Trying to get in the Doughboy, too?
Oh, in the Doughboy, yeah, yes, and the Doughboy, excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have at it.
Awesome.
Usually in Rhinebeck.
Before we leave the special requests, I just wanted to take a minute. It was explained to me fairly recently that although the Fairgrounds files about applications with the village, we don't actually have approval over what events they hold there. Those approvals are granted by Dutchess County. What we have is a longstanding
Or near state ag, from the fair.
Okay, right, or that. What we do have is a longstanding relationship with them, where we can work with them to make sure that whatever they're requesting works well for the village, as well as potential need for police or sheriff, that they need to come to us in order for us to provide, even though they pay for it, they have to come to us for it. So I was going to, I, I wanted to ask you all and sort of see if it was worth the time. I was just going to take a minute and perhaps draft a different application that we probably wouldn't even call an application, but maybe we would, from the Fairgrounds, so that there is not the impression that we have authority over their events, and that we have the ability to approve or deny the events. We can work with them, and we can approve or deny, you know, providing sheriff or police, but we don't actually have approval or denial authority over the actual events. And that was confusing to me, and I'm sure it is confusing to other people in the village. And so I was thinking that we might be able to resolve some of that by creating a slightly different form for the Fairgrounds to fill out, which I am happy to take point on, if you guys think it's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think that when the I mean, I think that when the, I recall that the reason why people wanted the application filed was really for coordination.
Yeah.
To make sure that we knew what was going on, our police knew what was going on.
Yes.
Just so that, just so that information was being passed.
Yeah.
And that was really the purpose of the event, asking them to file the event application.
And I, and I think it makes sense to have them file something with us. I just think that it's confusing to a lot of people when it's, when it's an event application, because it seems to imply that we have authority over whether or not they can hold that particular event, which we don't. Yes.
So last month, really, there seemed to be a big controversy over the lighting shows we're going to have with music and lights. So basically, you're saying you have no control over that.
So what we do is we have a longstanding relationship with the Fairgrounds where we can work with them to make it work with the village, but...
We couldn't have denied.
Yeah, but we couldn't have denied that event even if we'd wanted to. And that was confusing to me.
And there was a lot of good information that came out of that that said, what about noise? I think Vanessa brought that up, somebody else brought up about lighting, which are things that we have neighbors that, to that, that we need to protect as well. So we have that flexibility and with that relationship that we have to be able to go understand that in better detail, which we did.
Yeah.
And I think with these lights specifically, the music is coming through the car radio.
It is, but that was a...
Car radio, yeah.
We didn't know how to get that, right, had to ask.
Yeah. So, I don't know, with your guys' permission, I'll just take a shot at just sort of the Fairgrounds specific kind of...
I think that's a great one, yes.
Sure. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great.
And maybe it may not, I wouldn't call it a Fairgrounds application, no.
Yeah.
Because it could apply to maybe some other organization in the future or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it might have been only...
Chinese book ordination.
Not to, yes, not, not to limit it to call it...
Yeah.
Fairgrounds.
Okay.
I think it's great.
And, yeah, they've worked with us over the years.
Oh, yeah, very well.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there any other business anybody wants to bring up?
Go, Karen.
Karen, I'll let you go.
Okay, I just wanted to give the board an update on the closing of the fiscal year 2021. And I can diligently with the accountants and our system provider for our financial software, hence business systems, to close the fiscal year, for the most part, it's going well. However, I've had a few challenges with some of the postings and reports. Normally, this is completed by the end of July and I present the financial condition of the village report in August. So this year it's taking a little bit longer and with the board's approval, I will continue to work with the accountants and to close the year and present my financial report in September.
Of course.
I just want to, and I want to thank Karen for her diligence and putting, working towards closing our books. For a long time, we never really presented an end of year summary. We've been doing that now for several years, presenting it, coming from our CFO. It's not our report, it's our CFO's report, and I think that's valuable piece of communication. I know that Karen takes this very seriously, and I'm just going to go back to five years ago when I first started. I made, I made a remark to Karen, I said, we can do a lot of things, we can do a lot of good things, but there's one thing we can never mess up, and that's our accounting. And Karen really sets the model for that, so thank you for your diligence on working on that.
Thank you, Karen.
That's, that's a plan.
I just wanted to give an update about the marijuana survey.
Oh.
To weed or not to weed? Yes, that was the question. And apparently, a lot of people are interested in this question because we now have over 725 survey takers.
How many of them are the same person submitting the same survey?
Right, so I wanted to clarify to the public that this is not an official vote where it's one person, one vote. It is a survey to get a directional sense of how people are feeling. There's a comment form where you can give us a comment, but because the survey's anonymous, it's not a scientific survey where we're able to authenticate individual users. So we're all aware of that, and this is not going to be the make or break on our decisions as board. That said, it's really interesting to see over 700 people, or 700 surveys submitted and hundreds of comments. So survey closes August 31st, and at that point, I'll be very busy going through all the comments.
Let me know if you'll answer that.
Okay. So, yeah, so just an update on that, but the survey is linked from the website if anybody still wants to take it, closes 5:00 PM August 31st. I also wanted to give a big shout out, separate topic here, we did the Flex Tech kickoff. This is the project to do an assessment of Village Hall, of the HVAC systems, air quality, filtration, heating and cooling systems, insulation, the general, a whole, a whole study of the, of Village Hall to see what improvements could be made. And John Raimondo came out and walked the entire building basement all the way up here, and it was a pleasure to get his institutional knowledge as well as Gary's, because there's a lot of quirks about this building. So that was, it was a great kickoff with the engineers from ME Engineering, and stay tuned for the next step in that process, but I think it'll be good and it will inform our discussion about the American Rescue Funds, because this is a potential use.
I thought it was great, what they did, that's all.
Okay.
Anything else anybody would like to add? I would like to make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss a personnel issue with one of our boards.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all right. Thank you for your good statement. I'd like to make a motion to leave the executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd also like to make a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:40 on August 24th. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just a reminder again to everybody, we have a lot of tools at our disposal today. We need to kick this virus out of the country. And some of the tools that we have is getting vaccinated, which is an important decision that everybody needs to make. The other tool is wearing a mask. So I'm encouraging everybody, thank you, Elmer, for wearing your mask. And right now, we are in a high infectious region within the state of New York, and if you follow the CDC guidelines, the CDC guidelines say if you're in a crowded situation or indoors in a crowded situation, you should be wearing a mask. So if you're going to the fair, wear your mask. Thank you.